Please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Grayman.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to remove an item? Okay, so I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August the 6th, 2024, with corrections of the Scrivener error that occurred on the trust number, uh, in the minutes. Uh, it was a four-digit number, uh, that changed, and it was a Scrivener's error. So we don't really have to, we can approve it with that. And then also the bills and payroll for first half of August 2024. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And, uh, any, any, does everybody understand how that works? Okay, all right, so then roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on the agenda. But the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer matter, or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would any do I like to address the council tonight? Uh, did you guys want to say anything?
Not yet.
Not yet? You want to do that? Okay, when we go to the motion, all right, we'll, we'll allow that. All right, so, uh, public hearing, uh, we got to get Alex on here, is that correct?
He's online.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, so I move to open the public hearing, um, for the AusLAD FY25 grant application. Can I, we need a second on that?
No.
We just opened it, okay.
It's all yours, Alex.
All right, thank you, and I can't see if there's any other guests or residents in the room there, so I'm just going to introduce myself. Uh, my name is Alexander Beneszek, I'm the Community Development and Planning Director for the City of Mattoon, and today we're here to talk about our AusLAD fiscal year 2025 application of, and future plans for the Lake Mattoon Marina and Campgrounds Revitalization Project. Kyle, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the presentation there.
Can you see that?
Thank you. Yep, that's perfect. And so, uh, yeah, today we have a public hearing regarding this project, if you wouldn't mind, next slide. So, you know, we've received this grant in the past for fiscal year 2024, and, you know, as you can see here, I mean, there was just a significant amount of phenomenal improvements to our lake. Uh, you know, we were able to get a new marina parking lot, a west pavilion roof replacement as part of a separate grant from the same group, an ADA accessible kayak launch through AusLAD, we were able to get three playgrounds, which are currently in progress for being installed, uh, over 30 picnic tables and riprap and erosion control measures, uh, that were essential to helping out with erosion-related issues at the lake, uh, and other various improvements. And, uh, you know, our, our grant that we applied for last year was about $600,000, and as you can see here, I mean, just a great visible and physical improvement, uh, to Lake Mattoon. And you could do the next slide as well, just to kind of showcase, uh, you know, some of the visitation that the area is having. Uh, this was literally like the weekend after, uh, the ADA kayak launch was installed, so there's definitely a clear market for folks, uh, that are interested in, you know, rural recreation-related initiatives. Uh, and, uh, next slide, please. Uh, and so our vision, uh, as the City of Mattoon for AusLAD, uh, for the fiscal year of 2025 is to implement Phase Two of the Lake Mattoon Marina and Campgrounds Revitalization Project. And, uh, so next slide, please. And so ideally, we're going to go over the majority of the projects that we're looking at here. Uh, so we're looking at applying for a total of $600,000 worth of grant funding, which is the maximum amount possible. Uh, and, uh, that would include, you know, certain projects such as what's listed here, a west campground sewer system, uh, a beach pavilion addition, riprap installation for erosion control, concrete beach pathways to enhance ADA accessibility for residents and visitors, uh, a, oh, I have that listed twice there, sorry about that. Uh, and then additional boat parking, multi-use pickleball courts, and various other small projects, uh, that are predominantly related to dirt work for erosion control. Uh, there's also a couple of, uh, other things for needed, uh, repairs around the marina area, uh, but finally, you know, our second-to-last here, you know, all of this and our application is contingent on, uh, you know, us being designated as a distressed community, um, just because distressed communities that are on that list are able to get 100% grant funding as opposed to having to provide a 50% match. And so, you know, last year, we were identified as a distressed community, uh, which is a designation that the, uh, from IDNR give to us, uh, and, uh, last year, we actually weren't on that list initially, reached out and were placed on the list, and so we're going through the same process right now, but there is a chance that maybe we are not on that list, uh, because we received a grant last year. So we've already placed an inquiry into, uh, the Illinois Department for Natural Resources, and we should hear back from them shortly about that project. But ultimately, uh, you know, projects like this, uh, you know, boost tourism interest in our community. And, uh, next slide, please. You know, uh, recreation-dependent counties, according to 2023 report, actually grew more than twice as fast as the nation overall, uh, and the Midwest recreation counties mirrored this trend as well. So that's all post-COVID data, uh, and at the end of the day, you know, initiatives like this, paired with creative marketing campaigns are needed, uh, that emphasize natural amenities and recreational opportunities, and should be geared both towards younger and older audiences. Uh, but, you know, that's essentially our AusLAD application in a nutshell for this year. We're just asking for, uh, permission to pass that resolution and move forward, and, uh, we'd be happy to take any comments from folks in the audience that might have, uh, suggestions for other improvements to include as part of that application. And I do just want to be very clear here, uh, that, you know, we are not going to proceed with the application if we are not identified as a distressed community, and then we'll work with, uh, IDNR, uh, to, uh, you know, basically submit for future grant proposals, uh, if that is the case. And so, yeah, happy to take any questions, comments about this.
Protection for this every year, Alex. In other words, don't say anything we're not distressed this year, but maybe next year.
Yes, if, if that happens, and, and again, we're still waiting to hear back from them about us not being on that list, but, uh, if we are, if we're not on it this year and we're on it next year, we're going to apply for these same projects.
Any other questions? So we can close. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing now, and, uh, that's it.
That's it.
Okay, so we're ready for, uh, new business.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-3278, approving the application for the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources AusLAD FY25 grant and the support for an adoption of Phase Two of the Lake Mattoon Marina and Campgrounds Revitalization Project.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Go ahead.
One second. Uh, Commissioner Phipps?
Yeah.
And, um, any discussion now on this? We had that, uh, we just had some discussion on it, of course, on the public hearing.
Any other question? Quick question we have, just, um, do you have an idea when we might get that notification, whether or not we're on that list or not, or is there a timeline?
Uh, I have placed a call to IDNR, and I'll be following up with an email, uh, and I did that right before I left for, uh, Washington DC for the, uh, US Chamber of Commerce Business Fellowship Program, uh, so we should be hearing back. Maybe I have something on my voicemail right now, we should find out hopefully by this Friday. I'm hoping to get a communication from them before then.
Yeah, just curious.
And, and we're not, uh, this, if we don't get the approval, uh, if we, if there's any matching required, we're not going to apply. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We have not budgeted for any of that, so, yeah.
Not for that, I'm budgeting.
Just make that clear. Okay, so, um, any other questions?
Comments?
Roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-5482, amending Section 35.01, fees and charges of the municipal code to update the schedule of fees charged by the municipality for campground fees.
Okay, a second to that motion. Second. Commissioner Cox, and any questions people have on this? This, there's only a couple of fees to change, right?
Right, it's, it's basically the, uh, two campgrounds are raising what we call premium lots, are the lots that are out along the water, raising them $200 next season, and then there is, um, boat dock rentals that we charge 250 to go into 300. And, and then there's a couple little changes on tent camping. Um, we've been charging $15, and I think the old ordinance didn't get the change where it was, it was stated at 750 instead of 15, so clean up a couple of the small ones. But really, the big two main changes is the dock and then the premium lot increase.
Yeah, and we didn't really have premium lots before, did we?
No, they, everybody was the same, and kind of weird that you have campsites that are along the water, right up front, beautiful views, and you got campsites that are back in the trees and away from the water, and they're, they're paying the same, so.
Well, it's been, what, four years?
Twenty-one was when the last time.
Since we've increased fees and, yeah, we just heard of a bunch of great improvements out there, so.
Yeah.
It's probably a little past due and justified to it, all the improvements out there, I think it's much warranted.
Yeah, and we plan on continuing improvements out there, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If none, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. The next three motions are, have to do with the, uh, purchase of permanent easements from the sports complex to the sewer plant across three different parcels. Uh, just to explain a little bit of that. So the first one is a mo, a motion to adopt special ordinance number 2024-1919, authorizing the purchase of a permanent easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer project from the Emerald Acres Sports Connection to the Waste Water Treatment Plant from AJM LLC in the amount of $10, including a temporary easement. Okay, can we have a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Commissioner Grayman, and any questions or comments?
I just want to point out, I think the newspaper had that as $10,000, it's not $10,000, it's the $10. Um, just, but, uh, again, it's Rule King's working with us and, and they're doing, uh, more or less donating the property for the easement. We, uh, do not have any crop damage in the Rule King at this point because we think crops, good chance that the crops will be out of the field prior to them getting to that section, they're the last section that would be being put in. So we're playing that by ear, there may be, uh, some crop damages that if the contractor gets done faster than he's planning, uh, there's a possibility we would have to pay some crop damages at a later date.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. A motion to adopt special ordinance number 2024-1920, authorizing the purchase of a permanent easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer project from the Emerald Acres Sports Connection to the Waste Water Treatment Plant from GLC Overton Farms, Inc. in the amount of $15,897.63, including a temporary easement. And can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen, and any comments on that one?
These, these next two basically is 75% of the value of the appraised property as if we were buying it, and, um, crop damage, so.
Which is fairly normal that it would be that or higher.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, question, or a roll call?
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Motion to adopt special ordinance number 2024-1921, authorizing the purchase of a permanent easement for the construction of a sanitary sewer project from the Emerald Acres Sports Connection to the Waste Water Treatment Plant from IOOF Grand Lodge in the amount of $30,768.56, including a temporary easement. And a second on that motion.
Second.
Mr. Cox? Comments?
Uh, the only thing I'll say on this is I've talked into, uh, two or three of the board members from IOF Grand Lodge, they're actually voting on it this, coming Saturday, so, but.
So this is dependent?
Been very favorable, yeah.
This is dependent on that happening, okay, yeah. All right, that sounds good. Anything else? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-3279, authorizing a lease of office space in the Illinois Central Railroad Depot to the Coles County Veterans Support Coalition, and authorizing the mayor to sign the commercial office space lease.
Okay, and a second to that motion. I'll say that, Mayor. Mr. Phipps, and now comments.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, state your name. Yeah, social security number, and, uh.
Okay. So my name's Carolyn Floyd, I live in Fort Worth, here in Mattoon, and I am in the Coles County Veterans Support Coalition. I'm Connie Jones, and Carrie Jones with me as well, we're all board members, and we really just wanted to tell you very briefly, thank you for even considering doing this. We found ourselves, very unexpectedly, uh, without office space, and so one Saturday while I was working the museum, Connie and Carrie were driving around town looking for office space, and when they came in the museum to, you know, say we were looking at these spaces, you know, just, we were talking about it, uh, the other museum volunteers said, well, what about the gift shop across the way? And so they went and they looked at it, and they fell in love with it, and they thought it would be a great space for the work that we do with the veterans. Just very briefly, I gave all of you one of these, in case you do not know what we do, we wanted you to understand what it is that we do, uh, since you're going to be leasing, we hope, leasing space to us. And just very briefly, what we do is we provide assistance to veterans, financial assistance, but also we, we help them, we, we walk with them, and we try to, uh, give them, uh, the resources to get, get ahead, get back on track. We're not just trying to give them money, but we, we will help them when they're in financial difficulty. We also do something called Miss Halt Meals, which is a, three times a year, we host meals for veterans where we provide a meal to them and their families. It's a networked opportunity, and we also provide some information, but it's a great way for them to get together and meet other veterans. And then we have the Hero Six Program, which is, we are, we visit veterans in six Coles County nursing homes. And we go in and we just visit with them, twice a month, we go in and do that, we do it for holidays, we do it for special days, and we also do end-of-life services. We'll continue to visit those veterans who are in hospice care, but we also do a pinning service to remind them just how much their service meant to our country. And so that, that program is particularly special to all of us because for some of those veterans, we're the only people that visit them, it's very important. And then we also do something called Military Reboot, and it is for, uh, veterans who have suffered military trauma and their families who are trying to help them through that process. And it's the only program that I know of anyway in this area, there's lots of great counseling services, but it's the only program that actually addresses this military trauma. And we pay for this for the veterans that, that need this service, it's a 12-week course, it is, uh, presented, it's facilitated by a veteran and his wife who have been not only through the program, but they also have been trained on how to facilitate it. So, uh, this, this year, we graduated 20 people from that class, so. Uh, we do, uh, we think we're trying to do a lot of good work, we hope, we think it's a lot of good work as well, so we really appreciate this opportunity and for you to allow us to get in there and, uh, with an affordable amount of money that we can, uh, you know, continue to do the work that we do. And we also want to tell you that we hope that we will be beneficial to you as well because we'll be bringing another organization downtown and into the depot, and we want to highlight the depot and maybe partner with the museum as well and do some things in the, in the depot. So we're, we're hoping we're good for some sense for you as well, so thank you for all of us.
Questions? Anybody?
Uh, will there be some type of signage out front, or will that be on the digital board so that people can learn more about this group, which is outstanding, plus all the services that you provide?
Um, I hope so, I, we need to ask the Indianian's Leah if, if that's possible to go on the digital board, but we will promote this in areas like that.
And I, I just think it's awesome, you know, especially people that have nobody, that you, you take care of them.
Yeah.
And I, and I want to thank Commissioner Grayman, who kind of got us aware of this couple council meetings, so.
Will, will you have regular business hours?
I will. I will start.
Did you know roughly what you, what you think, what are you thinking about?
We're thinking probably one day, um, during the day, one day, Grant and I, Saturdays, um, by appointment, it kind of staggered, so that we were arriving days at different times.
Okay.
But we do a lot of work where we're meeting with veterans, we would be in there quite frequently, we do, like, when we do the, um, Military Reboot, we will do that in that space, I mean, we'll be in there frequently.
Okay. Okay. Any, a question anybody has? Okay, then, uh, we'll do roll call.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Great, great project. A motion to approve council decision request 2024-2534, approving change order number two in the amount of $32,263.31 for the sports complex roadway project, and authorizing the public works director to sign the request. And a second to that motion? Second. Mr. Cox, any comments on this?
Just, uh, this is an adjustment for some additional work that we had to do out there due to the conditions, training, and so forth.
Did, did this change order, did it increase the cost?
Yeah.
Not to us, though.
Not to us.
Right.
It's, it's a 50-50 split between, uh, the sports complex and the EDP grant that we had.
Okay. So, okay. We're involved with it because we let the contract, but we're reimbursed for everything. Okay, all right. Just wanted to make that clear. Um, any other questions you might ask? And, uh, roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Department report, starting with city administrator Kyle Gill.
I was working on those easements, I will continue to finish up those easements this week and at the beginning of next week. Um, been working a little bit with Beth on some Tiff District, uh, addresses, getting ready to make sure that we get all the businesses that are in the Tiff Districts and business districts on the state's website, and make sure that we're collecting all the information we need for that. Um, and really just been working on different things, working on, uh, hiring for the park department. Um, and then, uh, really just day-to-day stuff, I've got a couple of things that I'll be calling around, a couple economic developments that I'll be calling around, talking to, uh, some of the, all the commissioners and stuff, so getting some opinions on what they want to do. Other than that, I'll leave it open for questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, non-city attorney Dan Jones.
Uh, been quiet a couple weeks for me, uh, business as usual, I'm still waiting for a ruling, Judge Bobard on the Frankenbush matter, I'll share that with you, get it, uh, but otherwise it's been, it's usual.
Okay, any, any questions?
Was the, was there a, the pairing for the brown shoe factory owner, has that passed? Is that coming up?
He has hired legal counsel, Kent Heller, from Heller Homes and Associates, and so the judge agreed to postpone everything until our next city court gives him time to get up to speed, so that'll be September 16th is next.
Okay. He couldn't get speed in the last six months, so he's, no idea.
He's not been in the case that long, I understand, so. Good for him. Yes. Okay.
Any other questions for Dan? City clerk Susan O'Briens.
Um, pretty much so, business as usual. Um, and, um, I've placed on our website that the, um, April 1st, 2025 election, um, information's on there and that the petitions are available in the city clerk's office, or they can get them from the, uh, website or the Illinois State Board of Elections website. It has changed this year, so. That's all.
Any, uh, any questions? All right, finance, Beth Wright.
I'm starting July 34th, the first three months. Everything on this 2.1, versus the signatures of 5.4, in the net of $700,000, $791.63. About a year ago this time, we're at $517,000, $191.13. Exposition at the end of July, this 26th, citywide, 26.7 million. Two, so, yes, 2002. Citywide revenue tracking. Eight, I mean, it's been a subject totally tabbed, and that, that's done at the very end of the month, where $8,000 behind the river just many year ago. There was a mention that they received market taxes, it was on the line of August, and received some of our reporting at the time what was lucky. And then I received a notification from the Department of Revenue today that they have the estimates for next year's PRT out. It's going to be about two-thirds of what we're going to see last year. So it's going to impact a lot of the, trying to get things organized for that, but we're really working on that September and October. And then I have graph of the, this whole part of our trajectory for it, just shows how much money we started the year with, which money has come in, where that came from, what it's gone out, and where that finished, which is the money, cash balance of the big 430. The general fund was a well-known to start with, about 26,000 revenues. Every basis, 26.19 of the signatures, like, before. Carl was working in the library section, he didn't have to keep on, started with $6 million, bumped it by 800,000, so we, we, we tax this, spent $1 million, got with $94, I think it goes for all this, but I don't want to take the time. Very end of salary information. Very last page shows the upper brackets. So we'll be publishing that in the paper and submitting to the county to get the, the final installment of property taxes. And lastly, the industry, the current fund, um, today, $11,954. The last meeting was 10:04.
Any questions for Beth?
Something just came up, do we by law, legally, have to publish those in a newspaper in a print edition any longer?
Yeah.
Is there, because I'm assuming there's a substantial Is there, I'm assuming there's a substantial cost for the, for the print version? Do we have to do that by law or can we?
Seen anything that says we can just put it on our website? Not yet anyway.
Still.
I didn't know, we, I didn't know if it could be in, uh, like the newspaper's online site or if there was any, if there was any cost savings to that.
Edition is just a, make sure that one's in.
Well, I understand. I just want to, the, after Vic Lawson.
Same for us.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they are trying to, you know, pass some kind of a law that.
It just.
The third party website that people could post it on or, or let cities post it on their site. But at this time, it's still got to be in the paper.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave and Beth? Okay. Public Works Day Clark.
A lot of, uh, general maintenance will on our street, sign of sanitary sewer plant, uh, water plant. Uh, we did get the, uh, pump in for Lake Mattoon. We're getting that all hooked up and get that tested out, make sure that that runs well. And then we'll probably be pouring out a new pad, put some fence around where it's going to be. Uh, it is mobile, so that's something that we can use in other places if it may be needed. Uh, the other thing on the water side is the, the lead water lines. We have a meeting on Thursday with Lakeland and a group there trying to get some, we have a grant of $50,000 to help collect the, the remaining data that we need. And that's, we're going to try to get some help from them with a couple of groups to help collect that data. Uh, as far as, uh, projects going on, they say across the school project basically is done other than the final grading and seeding. Uh, they had indicated they would probably come in sometime this week, but I haven't heard any more of that for sure. Uh, we did have the ribbon cutting last Friday and bang, I think the young lady was very thrilled with that, obviously. Uh, the Broadway, that's still moving along there. They're finishing up the stretch on the north side, 15th, from 14th to 15th. And, uh, probably we expect to have basically all the concrete stuff done sometime middle of September, and that's when the street lights will begin to go up at that point in time. Uh, now out of the sports complex, as of four o'clock this afternoon, all of Remington and all Fort Worth is paved. Uh, so hopefully we'll have both those open in the near future to be able to use. They are using a good portion of Fort Worth already for the, the developments that are out there. Uh, we do have some work we're going to do in the intersection of Remington and Fort Worth, so you can make that full leg, but that'll happen probably later this week. Sidewalks, uh, right now we're expecting those to begin, uh, next Monday. That's the plan we have right now. We are still waiting on source, uh, Waddell Way and the, it's very south in the Fort Worth way to get created. And then we can come in and do our lime stabilization and place the aggregate and be ready to start paving on those shortly too. Uh, the sanitary sewer line, uh, they are out there, uh, on the forest main portion of it along Remington from Detro, uh, today and yesterday. They expect to, they're boring a part of that and they expect to pull that pipe tomorrow for the boring part, and then they'll start trenching that back to the, uh, lift station, which still isn't ready yet. So we'll see. I know there's maybe some issues with all the equipment, neither in there yet to come in and exactly when that'll happen. There's probably something else there, but I think that's all.
Uh, just, anybody have any questions? Uh, just real quick, on Waddell Way, which comes off of Detro Drive into the, into the indoor facility, uh, what, is there any timeframes sort of sketch for that? You mentioned them, but is that, when would you estimate that, Mike?
There is a date on that, and I, I hate to say for sure what it is. Yeah, but, uh, yeah, as far as Remington and, um, Fort Worth Way, that's supposed to, that's the first phase wanted to, and we want to get that done basically by the end of the month. It's going to be closed, but you know, with the rains we had, uh, but there was times down that very low spot of, of Remington, there was five feet of water there.
That's all resolved now, of course.
Yeah. Well, it's not totally resolved because the storm sewer that takes that water away from there is part of their phase two, so it's not completed. So, I mean, all the water off of the, the buildings there, the, the strip mall area and the back behind that, that all flows there and there's probably, I don't know, 40, 50 acres of ground out there, all flows to that location. So, uh, until they get that in, uh, it could be an issue. We got a pump that sits there and pumps it out. There's 2,000 feet of pipe that pumps it away. So, uh, and they did say the, the pipe is quartered. It is somewhat of a special sized pipe. It is quartered. That was a couple of weeks ago and they said it's five to six weeks out. And then you got to put it in. So I really doubt that it's done maybe by Thanksgiving as early as people want. Throw it will be open.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Uh, okay, let's go with the fire department. Jeff, hello.
Thank you. Uh, since our last meeting, guys have answered 170 calls for service. Uh, inspectors have been, uh, they've done three inspections, again, spending a lot of time out there at Emerald Acres, um, with a lot of the large folks, sprinkling folks out there, all that. Got our last group sent up to Chicago for the, the live ARF burn training last week, uh, just in time for the air show. We had, we covered that, uh, the practice day on Friday and then the actual show on Saturday. Uh, both days were uneventful weekends, so, um, they've also been trying to get caught up on their hydro testing. Uh, last week they did their night drill, um, in between answering the calls. I've been working on that county hazard mitigation plan. Um, I think I got that wrapped up today, so. Been busy, kind of busy left, I forgot to submit the CTO for that. Emerald Hub we just there, so that will be next meeting. So that's all I've got in the statement.
Very good. Any other questions? All right. Mattoon Police Department, Chief Gaines.
One thousand nine calls for service in the last two weeks, 51 arrests. And I'm working with I.O. Solution right now to establish a, a new hire list, uh, when we have it exhausted. So just looking into next year with some retirement to have on that list today. So if you know of any young man or woman out there that doesn't have it figured out yet, that I do have, I belong in our test, we like to certainly recruit locally. So, so, uh, November 16th will be the test, uh, but the application goes live on I.O. Solution website in September. Get ahold of me if you want. Wanting to know about it. Wanting to apply. So.
All right. Any, any questions other? Sam? Okay. Next, Art, you could do architourism.
Yes. Yep. Uh, Angelia and Mindy are both attending a lightworks meeting in Shelbyville this evening. It's a, um, a partnership with several communities to look at various ways to partner together, expand, um, draw interest in various communities to cross promote, uh, different communities, lightworks, celebrations and, and, uh, displays. Um, they've got in addition to Mattoon, uh, Effingham, Shelbyville, Payna, Taylorville, Vandelia, Sullivan, and, and Mattoon, as I mentioned, um, all meetings. So, um, some things in the works for Lightworks in, in central Illinois. Um, the tourism staff also met with the general manager and marketing person from Emerald Acres, um, this past week to talk about, uh, what the, uh, tourism office can do to assist them in, uh, in their, their ventures. They're starting to work with our partner, Discover Downstate Illinois, and, uh, she reports some very good developments and more to come on that. Um, Angelia met with Cromwell, WMCI team last week to talk about next year's 40th anniversary of Bagel Fest. And there's a follow-up meeting, uh, later this week with a local artist about doing some downtown art and, uh, more to come on that as well. And, um, also working with the downtown, uh, building owners, um, on the downtown lights. Um, that's a long process as, as her notes say here. So, uh, still working on expanding, doing some things with the downtown lights and meeting with Discover Downstate Illinois next week to start the process of a visitor's guide and finalizing the Bagel Fest and the Fourth of July reports. Um, Charleston has been invoiced for fireworks. It looks like the Bagel Fest, uh, report is about 90% complete, so should have a final report on that, uh, to share with council next, uh, next council meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Dave? Uh, last is community development. Is he gonna, who's still, okay.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, uh, just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, so yeah, we're finishing up demolitions for the year, uh, getting close to kind of burning down, uh, that amount of funding. Uh, I believe we're at about 10 total demolitions currently for this fiscal year. Uh, so you know, just a lot of fantastic progress there and you know, it's very interesting. Like we've started to see the posts on Facebook, they all started off pretty negative and now every time we post, it's consistently positive. So it's been really great to see all the community support of, you know, these needed tear downs in the community. Uh, from there, permitting with the sports complex is going along well. Projects are moving forward as expected from our perspective. Um, last week I attended the Midwest Community Development Institute. It went phenomenally well. I was a presenter there in addition to an attendee, uh, and I'm bringing back a ton of ideas for downtown revitalization and for, you know, better ways to help market our community. Um, and currently I'm actually in Washington DC tonight, uh, representing Mattoon at the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation as one of the 34, uh, National Business Leads Fellows and cohort, cohort 10 of the fellowship program. Uh, it's a six-month program with a few in-person requirements, uh, that specifically focuses on enhancing workforce and childcare initiatives. And I'm learning quite a bit here that I'll be able to bring back not only to the city, but to all of our regional partners. And then finally, uh, we are in the process of setting up a reversing the exodus workshop with Illinois Extension, which will cover how to attract and retain young professionals in our community and will end with a panel discussion, uh, that's going to be led by local youth and young professionals regarding their opinions on what quality of life looks like here in Mattoon and Coles County, uh, from their perspective. And the date on that is to be determined, but I invite everybody in this room to attend. Uh, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Alex? Guess not, Alex. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Uh, then real quick on the council members, starting with Commissioner Clausen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank the board, the Veterans Coalition support group and what you do for a lot of, again, lonely people and taking care of their services is just, that's outstanding. And then these words are kind of shallow, but do appreciate everything. Uh, the pickleball court, uh, pickleball is, continues to take off. We are doing a court dedication. That is going to be, uh, September 11th. That's three weeks from tomorrow. At 5:30, uh, Kyle and I met with some of the, the pickleball people. We're going to put this together, obviously get the chamber to get the word out as well. So that's going to be, uh, on September 11th and we hopefully, um, council members and a lot of people in this room had a lot to do with that, like to have them there. It's about a 30-minute dedication. And I did have a, a meeting with, uh, Tyler Yoder at Emerald and just went through the history of how pickleball got to where we're at and then maybe what they can do, because he's got some plans too. And, uh, just kind of again, a history and then, uh, maybe transitioning not so much in the spring and summer and fall, but the winter months. Um, and then tournaments and other things at the sports complex. So it's good, good meeting, a lot of direction there.
Is there any opportunity to set up like a challenge pickleball tournament as a council member, you know, like a, uh? Wait, wait, why are we laughing?
I was actually wondering if he was going to challenge Ed on September 11th to, to, actually I'm kind of with you, but I think that would be.
Uh, we can, we can do that and I just.
It's for older people.
No, I get, I get the first draft pick, so I just want you to know. What's your experience?
I was going to say, I want, I want waivers on workers' compensation.
Okay. All right. You got to take it serious. All right. Any other questions for?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, all right. Commissioner Cox.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, just real quick, I'd echo what, um, what Commissioner Clausen said. Thank you all for what you do and, uh, thank you for it very nicely, but in addition to that, I'm just excited about having you down in the, in the depot there. But, uh, uh, I remember back with several years thinking how those office spaces could be filled and that's always been a challenge and just being there and, and having traffic going through there is going to be. It's, um, it's going to be, it's a win-win for everybody. So, uh, thanks. Thanks for all you do and thank you Commissioner Grayson for your part in getting that all put together. Appreciate it. That's it.
Any questions? Next is Commissioner Grayson.
Uh, ditto with what they said. I repeat it all. Um, I think, uh, police and fire, don't you guys have something to announce for this Saturday?
Fired.
They spoke to you. They spoke to you. Uh, car.
Yeah, softball game if they're relay, uh, starting to relay their line.
Yeah. I mean, MFD and MPD, so good luck with that.
They're trying to.
Make sure you.
Are you playing?
[laughing].
Probably out there representing.
You can staff the ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe not the ambulance. On 60-foot bases, it's going to be a completely different.
Yeah, it's going to be really, yeah, hockey's weekend too, so unfortunately, so that's really all I have.
What time's that game, Jeff? What time's it start?
Uh, six, I believe.
It could be done by midnight?
I'll be there around 6:05.
So, okay, so, uh.
I do believe there'll be some t-shirts there. Um, this year, getting back, getting back into that.
Mr. Phipps?
Yeah, I pulled the hamstring just listening to you. Uh, you won't, you won't see me on the bases. Um, times four, you guys do an awesome job. You know how I feel about it and you're more than welcome at any time on a Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM to come and talk to the Mattoon Exchange Club.
Challenger.
That's my.
Speaker of the year.
That's my plug. Uh, much appreciated. Uh, as far as public works, uh, attended a pre-construction meeting on the, on the sewer project that's going on, uh, went real well, a lot of moving parts, um, but these guys are going to, I know, knock the ball off the cover. Uh, public works continues to do well. We're working with about two to three persons shy right now, uh, when we lost a couple to con, uh, construction guys, uh, to up north. So even with that being short, um, they continue to stay up to speed. Um, we are contracting out some stuff just to get caught up on, on, uh, certain projects that have to be done timely. But, uh, other than that, man, they're, uh, they continue to amaze me with the short, short staff that we have right now. So other than that, I really appreciate it and, uh, that's all I have.
Any questions? Let's see, just a couple of comments from myself. Uh, we met with Kingspan today or this afternoon at the chamber office. Uh, the county was represented, closed together, the chamber, the city of Mattoon. Who else? Of course, we had three representatives from Kingspan. It's a very good meeting. They're going to be a very good community, uh, corporation, manufacturing company that's, that's going to be part of Mattoon. I think they'll be one of our better. So, uh, that, that all went very well. Um, let's see, I had a couple of follow-ups on fundraising for the, uh, sports complex, just some, uh, ones that, uh, that we really hadn't really contacted or spent too much time with. And then I also was spending some time on the hazard mitigation plan because they need some extra hours and some extra eyes on it and I, I'll have that done.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Grayden?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
Say no. If you're going to be.
Did you give me? If you're going to be that way, I'm going to say yes.
Say no.
You haven't said anything yet?
I'm supposed to say yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm going to say yes also. That means meeting is adjourned. We're going to have pictures. Who do you want, council?